Good evening, everybody. I'd like to take a minute to welcome our new council members and welcome you to us and say thank you for coming out to our first meeting of 2020. Can I get a, can I get a, Janice Julius in a moment, please?
We're thankful for another people to be with all the residents here and their families, be with them when they go back home safely, help us in our decision-making here, be with our own forces, Lord, be with our first responders, especially the ones that just got deployed. Thank you for all you've done. Good evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. The next up is swearing in of our newly elected officials. You ready for that? Mr. Jeff Russbridge.
Do I do everyone at once? Oh, who's new and revamped?
This is new and then we've got two that are just.
They'll swear me again, just to be safe. You want us to do it all? Yeah, it sounds good, Mike. So can you just raise your right hand?
I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city and that I will support and defend the charter thereof as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. If you so swear affirm, please say.
I do.
Thank you.
Permission to approve the December 2nd, 2019 meeting. Do you think we should approve? Agenda. The agenda, give permission to approve the agenda or petition.
We need to add A, B, discuss both additional striping and reflectors. What do I call it?
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve with the amendment?
I'll approve with the amendment.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Yeah, let's thank you. Okay. Permission to approve the December 2nd, 2019 meeting. May I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
May I say?
Say.
All in favor? Minutes, thank you. One second, please. Department of Commerce, Lieutenant Sullivan Bridge, come give us our Cherokee side, please.
Evening, everybody. We had a relatively quiet December. Twelve calls, six of them were traffic stops. We had two alarm calls, a domestic dispute, a domestic stand by, trespassing of residents too. The traffic stops were down a little bit this month because my main traffic person was out half the month, so, sorry. But things have kind of evened out as far as some of the traffic problems we're having. People aren't really going to stop signs nearly as much initially, but a little bit, so that's a good sign.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Chelsea, did we get those people signed yet?
We haven't marked. Ricky didn't have that till tomorrow.
Okay. Next up is on the air, just made our updates and update on our county meeting with Cherokee. The Q and was busy for me, so I have a meeting this month with Jerry Cooper. He's getting with the department heads to see what the best date is to meet. I'll take a day off and go down and meet with him, discuss Kennesaw Avenue, that project. We've sent him over the digital information from Barry. I've notified Barry, rejected bid and all that, so everything is done there. And then we'll also look at the Pickens Park. And then Miranda and Ahmed once will be meeting again to put something together, working to put something together for our meeting. Might have a work session to go over our capital improvement plan, what's feasible, maybe what's not, our long and short-term goals for the city for the next two years, see what we need to focus on. So I'd like to set a date for that in our February meeting for sometime around mid-February to spend a couple of hours with the council to go over those. See, I think that's going to be all from me right now. I'm ready, I'm going to turn it over to you for our finance report.
Okay. Bank balances, end of December for general fund is $587,714. Cash reserve is $165,332. SPOSS 2008, $391. SPOSS 3, which is Cherokee, the old SPOSS is at $102,132. Our Pickens SPOSS is at $482,900. And then SPOSS 4 for Cherokee, which is the older, this last referendum, is $673,403. And then the SPOSS 5 Cherokee is at $220,737. And that's all I've got. Other than the interfund, and then you'll hear, you'll see that in the later, those interfund transfers have been completed from SPOSS, or for general fund to SPOSS, so.
Okay. Next up's unfinished business, discuss ordinance violations and procedures. Before we start then, I'd like to say that I did speak with Louie Barnes on the complaint we had about cars, and she's asked for a 30-day extension due to hardship. She's had a death in her family. I told her I did not see a problem with it, but I wanted to make sure the council did not.
No problem.
All right. I know you're out there, but I'm going to let you talk about the ordinance.
I just want to know, like, what the clear process is, because we've talked about doing it only if there's a written complaint, then we address it. There's times that you drive by and see things that obviously need to be addressed. Do those get addressed without a complaint? And our policy actually, I want to have it copied in there. Policy states that, I've copied it and put it in there. It says complaint received and evaluated for priority, administrator, dah 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 dah. But I just want a clear, concise, because people will call and ask, or they'll email, you know, if I couldn't do this, if you didn't have a written report. I want a copy of the report, the complaint.
Right here in 2A.
Yeah.
It says oral, too.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So per our, you know, our policy book, you don't have to have that. I just want it clear, that we don't have to have a physical written complaint. Now that means everybody comes in, picking and looking.
Sounds very normal, so.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think it's our job as leaders in this community to listen to the citizens, what they bring to us, and then come back together as a group. And, you know, I know that we've identified our heavy hitters, which were the cars that are up on blocks and, you know, we had some mattresses that had been thrown outside people's houses. We've had some issues with a lot of, like, garbage and trailers, and while that's been cleaned up, I do think that it's, you know, things like that, that the council deems as a heavy hitter, if those are brought to us, they need to be looked at.
We also need to have a clear, concise way of how we're going to handle it going forward. Because there's some of these I have sent two letters. There's not anything, there's no citation or anything, but you have to have that next step, and that needs to be said, where it's, okay, you know what, you've had two notices, you haven't done anything about it, you have to hold court, you have to have a citation or something issued at that point to deal with it. I think you have to give them enough time to do it.
Our February meeting, anything that you've sent two letters on, put in our binders should be counselled to review, and we've already said that we can hold court, so we can and we will. Right, guys? I mean, I don't want to hold court for somebody with their grass too high. I want it to be a heavy hitter, and I think the council's identified those heavy hitters. It's not we're out to pick on any citizen or anything like that, we just, you know, want to keep our community clean. So if you've got a list of those complaints, go ahead and, that you sent two letters on, put the letters together.
And there's some that need a second letter. I just want everything very transparent, how it's handled, there's no questions, really, you know, like, if someone's his buddy or whatever, just across the board, clear.
I just stayed in the second letter that this is the final letter, the next step can be prosecution.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea, because then it's very clear and concise, that if it's not followed at this point, dah dah dah. But that way, everybody's putting some input into it, and it doesn't look like anybody's on the road.
Anything else on council, on the ordinance should proceed. We can review in February what we have. Discuss and replace, discuss the replacement of street signs.
The guys have made a list of all the street signs in the city. They're not covered by HOAs, and they've labeled the conditions of them. Their John's going through over the next month, because some of them are in excellent condition, some are in terrible condition, some just need to be cleaned. It's like there's mildew or something that's on there. So he's working on cleaning, on seeing which ones can be salvaged, which ones can be replaced. If we can replace as many as we can at one time, the shipping is what usually ends up getting us, so it'll save a chunk of money going forward. Somebody has stolen, we welcome to Nelson sign coming in from Kennesaw Avenue over the past week, so we'll have to order any one of those. So, kind of funny, but, so, it'll be, there'll be an update on it next week. But if there's any that you see that you notice, or that just clearly need to be, the claim something is missing or whatever, that we'll have, should have a list for the next actual council meeting.
These signs, the lady down here below the church, I don't know if she's come in and talked to you about a having a deaf grandchild at play.
She hasn't ever shown up. Stuff like that, I mean, we have to know that, because that needs to sound.
I told her she didn't put up here to talk to y'all.
Yeah, it's literally all she, they may even, if they have one, they're going to put it out. If not, they may need to put it on a list of things to be ordered and, you know, keep up with it, so it's.
Who is she?
It's the first house on the left, as you go around Apple Road Road, go past the church and by right, first house on the left where the swimming pool is.
Uh, Eldon, Miss Elder?
I guess that's her name.
The one with the swimming pool or after?
Yeah, the one with the swimming pool.
Okay, yeah, that's Miss Elder.
Said she had a deaf grandchild and would like for a sign to be put up, some speed bumps whilst you wanted it, but.
That's where the marble trucks go out that way, and maybe their trucks can't go over.
Said she scared her granddaughter.
I know, well, that was one of the main ones we had identified, but it was after we talked to them, their trucks can't hit those bombs, and that's their throughway through the city.
Could we check with the city of Jasper about, they had a sign they put up that told you when you were speeding, you would have a flash.
We can get those. It's lived, I've seen them in the books. It's like a solar powered thing that's like that gets at your speed or whatever, but at the same time, it's like if we don't have law enforcement to back it up, you'll have people that drive by to see how fast they can go, but they do fly by your house. I've seen them out there.
Is that going, is that going out?
It's when you leave, like, if you leave City Hall and you turn right, where the road forks, if you bear the right, going around the road, it's where the horse pasture or cow pasture is out there, they call it apple workers.
Okay.
And the first house on the left that has a swimming pool, and that's Miss Elder.
If you had that into our action, I'll have to get with her to get a sign. And speaking of signs, Kenny, I did follow up with, I did follow up again with the marshal's office regarding the, they were going to be checking the, is that rope?
I've covered it.
I didn't speak with her.
We emailed him. He told me who to get with, and they called me back, and I was watching it for any three trucks.
And I called too, because you've given me the name and number, so I called, and they are looking at it. So, thank you. Anything else regarding, regarding our street signs? I know that we have, we've marked the places for all of our speed bumps to go. That should help slow down things through here, and hopefully when Ricky gets back, we'll get those in this week.
Can you check on the cost of all those signs where you?
Yeah, they're not inexpensive, but I don't think that that, I mean, if that would help.
I mean, it might.
Especially if it's an area we can't put speed bumps on.
That flashing light makes, it gets your attention.
Yeah.
It's like it takes your picture, yeah.
We can also ask Pickens to kind of.
I wonder if mine's flashing every time I went by, unless it was your speed bump.
Do you have a placement on the speed bump that you're going? We did.
Yeah, we went and marked them.
We went and marked them. They have to be so far off of the, so far off the back from the speed from stop signs. And what we did is we tried not to block anybody's driveway or put one right at their driveway.
There's one kind of round curve you were talking about.
Yeah.
We did, we marked it with a red spray paint around the edges of the road, and it's usually near, I think most of them are near street lights.
Street light.
So it was easy for the guys to find. The lady that lives across from Ricky, Arlene Dean, she had actually called and said that they do not want one on her street now, so figured out what lady decided. Because they're using that as a cut through to avoid Blue Ridge Abening, since Blue Ridge Abening has one. She was complaining people were cutting through there to avoid.
Is there a stop sign there?
There's a stop sign in there, but she said that now they don't want a speed bump there, so that's up to everybody, whether she gets to decide if you get a speed bump on that road or not.
Well, we can.
They're all temporary, they come back up. It's not like they're being gleet down or anything.
If we visit that one to make sure it's not impacting her driveway at all.
Yeah, well, I knew she wanted it moved away from where we marked it, but then she said she preferred just not to have it at all.
Okay. All right. Anything else regarding our replacement of our street signs? Okay. Discuss and vote on moving public appearance to number seven before unfinished business.
I think I prepared that amendment, but I apparently did not send it here, so.
But I didn't get it.
I didn't bring it with me. So what we could do is, I think, what your preference there was pretty clear, so we could vote to amend that particular section of the ordinance to move public comments to the appropriate place, and then do the second reading of that, because we've got two readings in the next meeting. So my understanding, in the code, it would be moved from its currently, in the code, is number eight, right before adjournment, it would be moved up to, in the code, number five, it's in section 2-46 of the code, which is right after reports from committees and departments.
Is that what everybody wants it?
Yes.
I'm going to keep that right with him, and I'll take a motion to approve the moving of the public appearance. You said to number?
To number five.
To number five.
I'll make a motion to move it.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? Minutes, thank you. So that's our things and. Okay. Discuss and vote on adding additional security cameras. Kelsey, I mean, you have all that agreeing.
Yeah, since that came out, it looked, they sent a price, everything's in there, the quote that he had sent over. A total to add two additional hardware cameras up by the water tower. It would require doing another radio box, communicate with the boxes at the ball field, because the signal wasn't clear. But it also would allow us to, over the course of time, because our current system holds 16 cameras, this would allow us to add an additional 16 cameras at some point. We have like one slot there now, but it's kind of like the more you add, the less, the more it eats up the memory or something. But the total to put two up there with all of the work, the labor, the new radio stuff, it was 2,400, and that was with two cameras up there. He did say that whenever we do that, and I stuck an email from him in there, I thought that we may want to upgrade the memory. I think we have eight terabytes now, and he'd recommend it go on to 12, and it was like $300, $350. It's not something that's required, but it's like the more cameras you add, the less time that it stores the video, so.
Right now, we've got 10 days, right? Right now, we have a 10, it's right around 10 days it stores it for, right?
Right now, it's probably close to three weeks. I know when we originally did it, it was probably like a month and a half or so.
I'm going back this March, 10 days.
Yeah, well, the one, the portable one would hold it, I think, for a week. The one in there will hold it, it's about three weeks right now. So it's not something you have to do right off the bat, but it's kind of, usually when you identify a problem, you have to go through and start looking. It can be a week later or two weeks later, and if you don't have it on there, then good work, you can't prove anything.
We're going to talk about them in a second, but we just put one apart to.
He could do just one. He had sent a quote doing two, I think, just because of the way the water tower is, that way you could hit the entire area. And there has been drug activity going on up there, and I have heard that there's been some since we removed the other one.
Yeah.
That it's taken back up.
And I've done some drug, I've had a bit of that actually, and I've seen some lately tonight. So right now, I think, I think once we get an occupant in the house, you're not going to have any drug activity, or I don't think anything really on that backside there of the water tower. So if you just wanted to do the one in the front that hits that parking lot and where the kids playing stuff, that's fine, too.
Yeah, he didn't break down.
At some point, if you decide you wanted to put a bathroom up there or something like that, then you can always add another one.
Yeah.
Kind of our bathroom.
But that way, it would be a hardware camera, too, that's our camera, and it's not, it's on city property, there's not any questions about anything.
Yeah.
Do we have cameras in this park?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
They've come in handy, actually, a couple of times. We've had a couple vandalism, but.
There was stuff today.
Today. It's been a while, so that was a good thing, but we've caught it and addressed it, and, you know, I think the last one we had was like $100 worth of damage, and that was reported, and because they were binders, the Pickens County, and they live in Pickens County, Pickens County handled it.
Ricky had told us that there was a lot of drug needles and stuff like that on the walking trail.
There have been. I don't make those. It's kind of like, once we put the cameras in, it cuts us out. I mean, it's like, nothing's going to get rid of it for good, but it's just kind of a deterrent, I guess, hopefully, things cross, but I wouldn't want that.
And we do try to have that, we do have, try to have that walked, with the second maintenance person, it's been a little bit easier to have them just go check it. I mean, I know there's one of the kids that used that trail as well, singing on it.
There is no way I would use it. I myself hot-will that.
I'm with you. All right. So can I get a motion to approve, well, first let's talk about, do we want to add, do we want to add an additional terabyte so we have the longer storage period, which is $300?
Yeah, I think we need it, yeah.
If he's going to, if they're going to be out here, I would do as much as you can at one time, because of labor, half the time is what ends up getting you.
Did he kick some issues that he couldn't?
The guy studied it, because I know where the dumpster was, it would only record motion, so hopefully that it's going to record more than just motion, because it wasn't picking up half the stuff that was on there. It'd start recording, so they wouldn't move, and then you just lose the video.
The one.
The one where the dumpsters go, which it's kind of, the dumpsters are coming back on Friday, just definitely.
Are we using the portable way out?
We can try it, I don't know if it's going to pick up or not. Because the signal, I know whenever he was originally setting it up, it wouldn't pick up anywhere, like, anywhere in this area at all. It had to be up on top of the, like, up on top of the hill to get the signal. I don't know why, but it was.
Are we going to try and pick it up there with the, we're still going to try?
Yeah, we can try to get it up there. Yeah. We can try to get it up there, and I'm pretty sure Evan has a camera that goes that way, so if we have issues, they've told me before that we can come in and view their video as well.
We're going to take that as an action, video camera, the sanitation, the sanitation truck.
Oh, you're talking about, I thought you were talking about putting in where the dumpsters went. Putting on the sanitation truck's not an issue, it just has to be recharged.
Well, I just figured, I think we already tried it here, for some reason, and it didn't work, and then he tried it right there, too, didn't he? The guy that.
Yeah, he's tried it all over the place, around here.
So he did.
He tried it there where the dumpsters gone.
He tried it in that vicinity. I don't know if he actually went to where it would be there, because it could be that you're getting far enough up the hill up there that it would pick up. It has to be completely reset right now, because once the battery dies.
Dumpster days start on the 10th.
Yep.
Before the 10th, I'll come out and try to see if I can get it to work in that area.
Yeah, we can get it on the trash truck. That, there on top of hill, it's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have signage at those cameras, or are you going to have signage?
We will. Yeah, we have, we have all the signage and everything for those. All right. So can I get a motion to approve, do we want to do one camera or two cameras for minutes, guys?
How much is a college degree?
He didn't, he didn't break it down. I was looking at it a minute ago, it's just a.
2,800 for everything?
It was 2,800 for everything, and he said a large part of that was putting in that other radio signal thing, because it's got a bounce, like, it wasn't communicating with it.
Probably a handful, like, we have a few.
Yeah, it wasn't, the cameras itself weren't a whole lot, but, so, I mean, you can always do two up there now, and if you want to move one somewhere else that we find another place you wanted, or you could do just one, but it's not like they're going to be out here anyway, and you can get the coverage.
Yeah, it's not going to save you much, and I'm trying to drop it.
It's not.
Yeah, but the cameras are. Can I get a motion to accept the bid for the invoice for the security cameras, too? Okay, I have two cameras for the Pickens Street project and for the.
The extra storage was like under $350, I think. It was right around, I would just do, maybe make a motion to approve under $3,000 for all of it, and that way, kind of, if there's any fluctuation in there at all, it doesn't throw it over, because I don't have, because I thought I put that email in there that had the exact price for the terabyte. It was $300.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the $3,000, anything under $3,000 to add the two cameras, the additional terabytes, and the radio frequency?
I'm not sure we approved the $3,000 for the two cameras and the extra terabytes.
Can I get a second, Jan? Thank you very much. All, who knows? Okay. New business, this is the year 2019, oh, I'm sorry, I did. He discussed the striping and reflectors for, the additional striping and reflectors for. Kelsey, you put something in here for that?
Yeah, this came in like 3:30 today, which is why it wasn't on the business agenda. They started the restriping on the Cherokee side, but apparently there was a communication error in where we wanted it stopped, so it was done per foot, so it's not like we were overcharged. But the county stopped it at the Pickens-Cherokee line, not understanding we wanted it at the Nelson-Pickens line. So they striped all down there, it's nice and bright, you can see all the lines driving down the road, so they gave it, they sent the pricing in to go from the Cherokee-Pickens line to the Nelson-Pickens line, it was roughly $7,400. And I did ask him to give us a price on the reflectors, because I know if you leave town at night, once you hit the Cherokee line where they maintain it, it's like a runway. You can see there's reflectors on both sides, you can see exactly where everything is, so the pricing to put the reflectors all the way down, everything that we have striped is right at $7,200. So the total to do the additional striping plus the raised markers was right at $14,000. The raised markers clearly don't have to happen. We do have some element left from when I paid the first invoice, I think it was like 13 something, I think we had 19 in there, and we just got the new element check just came in, and it was $20,000. We do have to have a 30% price match. Can we use SPOSS for that?
You can use SPOSS.
So that, yeah, so the funds are there, but especially going through the windy area. I had some random guy that doesn't even live here call the other day complaining that, he's like, I have to drive through it there every morning, it's dark, can't see anything. He lives in Jasper, and he drives to wherever, so, he said there's times that he's almost left the road.
Yeah, I've had a couple of those as well.
I agree with the striping, but the reflectors this time of year, they're fixing, they tore up. If we have a high.
They scrape them off, unless you get them counters on them.
Yeah, unless you have a counters on them.
I didn't know there was a difference in them. I just asked him if they sent them goodbye.
They're lay on top, blue, and when they scrape the road, they pop them off.
Yeah.
Do it all the time with Jeff.
I didn't know they were really different.
Did we just pay, how much did we pay for the striping and stuff?
It was about 13, and that took it to the county line, and the additional striping will be another $7,400. The actual, like, pricing for all of that is on the next page.
Didn't they quote us all the way through the same thing?
They quoted for a length of, there was just a misunderstanding, I think, in where they were supposed to stop, but it was done like by the foot or whatever, so it wasn't that the price was different, it was just a, they didn't understand that we wanted it all the way out there, so when they quoted it.
Well, Jeff, Jeff Morton understood it, but when he relayed it, they didn't understand Well, Jeff, Jeff Morton understood it, but when he relayed it, they didn't understand it. And they didn't understand that Jerry Cooper had agreed to pay for the Pickens County part of it. So they stopped right at the line. So, and when they, when they, when they came out and checked it and gave us the price on it, they just did it to the line. And when I had communicated with Jeff Morton, he thought the, the line that I was talking about, which was our Pickens line, you know, where the, where the city ends and the county begins, he, we were on the same page. The people that he communicated with was normal, so.
But now, the repair work they're doing, it's, it's on this side where they stopped it. Is that gonna affect it too?
Well, I'd ask about that, because they're gonna come in, they can't do that until the spring, I had to deal with the weather. But he said that if there's any touch that needs to be done, we'll just handle it then. He didn't make it sound like it was something that we would have to pay for. It was just, when you're gonna get the striping done, and then we'll handle stuff as it comes along. But he's also gonna give us a price on fixing that St. Cole on Dogwood. And I think they're actually coming out tomorrow to raise the thing and actually look in there and see what's doing. And to give us a firm price on Haversham, to repay all that. So hopefully, at the next meeting, we do have those numbers, and not at three thirty data.
We need to get it stripped, that's for sure.
So you're gonna, he'll get you a price, right?
The pricing for the stripings here. I just have to give him an answer on it.
Seventy-four hundred? So can I get a motion to approve the striping for seventy-four hundred, the additional striping?
I might be option to approve the seventy-four hundred.
I'll second.
And we're gonna hold on to reflectors, Ken.
We're gonna ball it on that? All in favor?
All in favor. Unanimous. There we go. New business. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen audit report. Tacey Joe, you're gonna have to.
Okay, Sarah. Welcome to my place. The audit reports to council members. There is additional letter that we just sent to the council that I won't be wondering, I just dug it in the front of the. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah. I'm one of the CPAs and managers that work for our associates. I audit along with Tacey Black, and he was in the audience. In case you have questions that I can't answer, we can defer those over to Tacey. Yeah, so your fiscal year nineteen, pretty well. Overall, the city's made a lot of progress in just getting more organized, starting to revamp some policies. You get kind of an idea of where they wanna take the city of Nelson. They did establish a capital projects plan. I heard earlier that Mayor Green's also gonna be looking at those in the next few weeks and kinda get some progress, especially how we're gonna spend SPOS money in the future, so that's really exciting to see. If you flip to the first letter that was in the report, this is our interdepartment audit report. And there are three options that we can give you as an auditor for your report. This is an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can give on audit. States that in the best of our ability to ascertain whether these financial statements are clear of error and can be materially correct, relied upon, because I have good numbers before you. And so we can just get past that, but good job there. So in the basic financial statements, you have two sets of statements, if you will. One is the government-wide statements, and then you have your fund balance statements, or your fund statements. The government-wide is kind of the ten thousand foot view of the financial activity of the city. You have, I mean, these government-wide statements, the statement of net position, which if you are in the corporate world, is kind of the balance sheet of the entities. And then you have the statement of activities, which is like a profit and loss, or a statement of revenues and expenditures. Statement of net position shows all of the assets, as well as the liabilities of the city. The city of Nelson is fairly unique, and then it doesn't have any debt. So you're gonna see a lot more in the asset section than you will in the current liability section. They don't have any non-current liabilities, so just go. You'll see at the top, you've got cash, as well as restricted cash. This is including both of your general fund and your SPOS fund cash. The restricted cash is going to be comprised of SPOS cash, since it is legally restricted to be used only for capital projects. There's nothing really unusual or different, or anything that sticks out on the statement of net position. We do have unearned revenue this year, which is a little bit unique for the city of Nelson. And that is simply where sanitation for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty was billed a little bit earlier. And so we did collect some sanitation revenue that will be deferred until fiscal year twenty. So everything is fairly comparable to last year. The next page shows the statement of activities, and this shows all of the revenues and expenditures for one fiscal year. It shows all, everything in order, so it starts out with general revenues, which are your taxes, like, your property taxes, the general sales and use taxes, and franchise fees, and business licenses. And it also shows a breakdown of all the expenses for the year by department. So it's got general government, judicial, fireworks, cultural recreation, and housing and development. This is your ten thousand and aerial foot view of how the city of Nelson performed financially in fiscal year nineteen. And if you continue to go, as we work our way through the report, it gets a little bit more detailed each time. The fund statements are different than the government-wide statements, because the government accounting standards for determined that to be useful in determining how to run a city, they're really concerned with what is currently available to the city as a resource. And whether current operations are able to meet the expenses of the next sixty days. So it takes out things like capital assets, like your infrastructure, which you can't just go up and dig out of the ground and use to pay your current light bill. So it takes out anything that is going to be non-current or available as a resource for the government to meet its current obligations, as a tool to help cities know how they're doing financially, and to help them budget, and make plans with the resources they have available. So that being said, you will notice the difference between the government-wide statements, as well as the fund statements. And you'll see a reconciliation on page six and eight, showing how they do tie. It just takes out things like the capital assets and related depreciation. Overall, if you go to page seven, you can see that at the bottom, there's this number called net change in fund balances. That is how much revenue the city collected over what it paid out in expenses. And at the end of the year, the general fund had a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars additional revenues in excess of their spending, so they were able to add to the fund balance of the city, rather than having to tap into prior years' resources. The SPOS fund has a net change in fund balance of two hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty-four. The SPOS fund is a little bit unique, because this is a capital outlay account. But this is not a very good number to go by on whether it's good having an increase or decrease, because it simply is according to the timing of your SPOS referendums and the timing of your projects. Typically, in a capital outlay fund, you'll see at the beginning of a SPOS referendum, a really big increase in your net position. And then as you start actually performing the projects, you may have a year where you use everything up to finish the project. So that's not as useful as the general fund net increase in fund balance. But overall, very solid set of financials. The city's doing well with managing its money, and has continued to make progress. And again, as the capital projects are coming up ahead, we'll start to see a little bit of a change in that SPOS account. The city also has a budget-to-actual statement, which is on page nine. This is for the general fund only, not the SPOS fund. And it is a government requirement that the city budgets according to actual expenses, and that expenditures don't exceed their budget expectations by more than ten percent. They did have a couple of changes that were kind of near fiscal year end, and there was not a final budget amendment. So there were two categories where the city did exceed on a line or department level their actual budgeted appropriations, although overall, total revenues did not exceed the budgeted expectations. So that did generate one of our findings, simply because on an individual line, it was over ten percent, but overall, you guys were well, well below your budgeted appropriations. The next section is the notes to financial statements. And this whole section really discusses line by line what those numbers that I just kind of mean. So if anyone wants to fall asleep quickly, they can read that at night, go through everything. But it is very useful to, if you don't understand a term for what is included in the number of recorded notes, because it does discuss things in detail, you can refer to that section. I'm gonna kind of skim over it. As far as capital asset activity, it was fairly standard here for the city of Nelson. They have continued to work on the storm drainage issues in fiscal nineteen. There weren't a lot of capital assets purchased. We did purchase a compota tractor for the street department. And other than that, it's fairly similar to prior years, mostly just in preparation of future capital projects. And you can see a chart of all of the capital asset additions and disposals on page sixteen, if you can, and also move those. So one thing that the city of Nelson does that is not required, but at the will of the board and council, we have continued to include it in your audit report. On page twenty, we do show a detail of all of the revenues and expenditures of the city on a budget-to-actual basis, that's broken down line by line. So you can see exactly what goes into each number. So general property taxes includes property taxes, intangible taxes, motor vehicle taxes, rental taxes. And it will actually show you what's all in these general taxes, including all. So that's just a more detailed layout of what we already covered in the beginning statements. I won't go over those, but again, that's very useful in planning future budgets, and being able to see how the city measured up to their expectations. The next section is our letter showing our internal control over financial reporting, compliance, and other matters that we account on performing the audit. So these are what we consider or term your findings. And we did have a couple this year. Mostly, they're very standard, such as the segregation of duties, that's our first comment. In a city this size, it is nearly impossible, or simply unfeasible, or not financially efficient to have a staff on board that's large enough to fully segregate the duties from a financial perspective. Segregation of duties is where you can completely segregate how cash is handled. So you separate the person's job for receiving cash from the person who's gonna report cash, to the person who's paying invoices, and then typically, it's nice to have one extra person to reconcile cash flow, obviously. That's not always sufficient in a city this size. So this is a fairly standard comment. It's here just as a heads up to council that because you are a small city, it's crucial that the city council be involved, and that you are aware of all the transactions that are going through the city of Nelson. And this is just kind of a courtesy comment to say, you are definitely important as the council in the operations and running of the city of Nelson. The second comment is also typical in a city this size. The city of Nelson operates on a day-to-day basis, using the cash basis of accounting, which is probably the most financially efficient, where you don't have to have somebody coming in monthly and making what are called accrual adjustments to the city's books. All this is, is where we as auditors come in and we help convert your books from the cash basis to what's called the accrual basis of accounting. Accrual basis of accounting is concerned with the timing of transactions, rather than when cash was paid. So an example of this would be if somebody performed work on behalf of the city in June of two thousand nineteen, but that vendor wasn't paid until July. The cash basis would pretend it didn't happen until the cash went out in July. The accrual basis says, well, as of June thirtieth, we did owe this vendor. Therefore, that cash has been spoken for, we owe it, and we'll recognize liability in June. So it is just a difference in timing, nothing else between those two. And if it's material, which it nearly always is if you have SPOS involved, we do include that as a comment. The next comment is on reconciliation of cash. This one is purely because the city decided to switch banking financial institutions mid-year. It did offer increased revenues for interest, and it lowered a lot of the bank charge costs. It was a very good sound managerial move. However, it did cause a little bit of chaos in the interim between switching those banks. And because of that, and then the changeover in city clerks and all of that, there were a few months where they were a little bit behind in performing bank recs, which are usually performed monthly. Some of them were performed every other month, that sort of thing. So we did put a comment saying, those are better to be done monthly, so that you can timely, efficiently correct anything that you might have found in your bank reconciliation, which is very common. It's very easy to miss something, especially if you switch banks. So that tied in together, when the SPOS was moved from one bank account to another, the routing numbers got mixed up between the SPOS fund and the general fund. It's corrected, but it wasn't corrected by June thirtieth. So anytime the general fund owes the SPOS fund in any form or fashion, it automatically generates a comment. So there were actually two comments in relation to the funds simply being put in the wrong account and then switched back. So no money was spent incorrectly. It just was a timing issue. So you heard DeMention that everything had been paid back. It was all paid back, it's all good. But two comments on, that were generated.
That's a state, that's a, that's a state?
Compliance issue, as well as we did. It generates about three different comments. One, state compliance. Anytime that you have any SPOS funds that are not spent specifically according to that referendum, or if they're put in the wrong account, because it legally has to be in a separate banking account, it generates a comment. And then the interfund balance comment is related. It just says that you have to pay those back by year. So if you find something, you have to fix it immediately. Sometimes that's not feasible, but this is a pretty standard comment that can often go together with those. The next comment is with the billing periods for sanitation. As I said, one was billed for in May instead of June, so revenue was collected a little bit early. It's a timing issue. Some people weren't overbilled, they didn't overpay. We simply just deferred it to the correct quarter, so that it wouldn't be done. I already mentioned that overall, the city did not materially see budgeted appropriations, but they were off on a few of the departments by ten percent, so that's an automatic comment regarding state compliance. Those were the only two state compliance issues. We also included a comment regarding the approval of payroll rates. Everything was approved, but it wasn't included in the city council minutes. So this is just our heads up to make sure that anything regarding payroll does go through city council minutes in a written form, so that you can refer to it in public documentation, if any changes in payroll. But overall, it was a really good year for the city of Nelson. You will see a couple different note disclosures that are a little bit new from last year. But all in all, it was fairly similar. And I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to come out and meet with us. It's been enough time to go over it. It really helped me a lot more. You did a great job, just, just with your overall explanation of findings and some stuff. I appreciate you helping us to get things reconciled and getting it done. That was, that was, that's very helpful. I know Miranda, just this time, but couldn't have been able to get with Miranda.
I have not yet. Miranda's been a friend, but I helped a little bit with the reconciliation. But yeah, we'll, we'll be sitting down, hopefully soon, I can set a date with you.
I'd like for you to do that before we start our new budget, just that we're. Anybody else have anything? Tacey Joe, she did an excellent job. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We have a lot of good business and discuss and vote on our copy release.
No, I haven't.
And I know that Miranda and some of the, Miranda, but Chelsea has been all over our copy release.
Oh, sorry. I'm still wondering about, I didn't pay attention. Okay, copy release. Line B. And our copy lease is actually, I think it technically was up in December. It had been a five-year lease. But anyway, we've spent roughly $12,000 in something. You can basically go buy that machine brand-new for $12,000 or for $10,000, is what they told me. So they gave me prices on doing a new lease that would supposedly lower the rates, but I also asked them, we can just purchase this machine? They'll sell us this one for $1,900. And the rates on it, like the copy rates, because of the maintenance agreement, because it orders its own toner and there's packages get delivered by UPS all the time for stuff it orders. It's all included with the maintenance agreement. And I think most printers have them. But I think the rates he gave me initially were double. We also got quotes from Canon, who's the marble company, the marble companies, so their rates were like half that. So I copied and pasted it and sent it to him. He honored what they did. Plus, he added 10, he was $10 a month for any shipping charges or whatever, but it basically got it down to where it would be roughly $109 a month for standard usage rates. And we owned the machine. So there is a lease for the maintenance though, which is, I think it's still a five-year lease for the maintenance agreement. But it covers anything that it needs. If they have to come out and work on it, whatever, all that's covered in it. But we would not have a lease on the machine itself because we would own it. And if something happens to that, we can buy another used machine or if then we want to get into, I think, a poor investment of re-leasing another machine, we could do that.
So what's the, I'm just a five-year lease on, I mean, the five-year maintenance agreement?
It's, originally it was $163.60. And that was for, I think we'd run roughly 2,100 copies, black and white, and a little over 1,000 in color per month. That was just the yearly average. He got it down to where it's at $109. So right now, we could spend $2,000, buy that machine, and then have a copy, maintenance agreement for all the copies and any stuff that has to go with it.
$1200 a month?
No.
So $1,200 a year?
$109 a month, yeah.
What are we, what are we currently paying?
We're currently paying $203 a month for the lease. And the copy rates fluctuate, but it was, it would be roughly the $163.60. Because he had kept the copy rates the same unless we leased a new one. And then he was gonna cut it in half. And he went out and cut it down to be comparable to what Canon quoted us. But the advantage of this is it's already hooked up. All our, all of our equipment's hooked up to it. We know how to use it, it's already in place. Whereas if we buy another machine from Canon, to go in and buy one that was off-lease, I think it was $3,500, $3,400, thereabouts, the copy rates would be equivalent to what these are for this lease or for, if we purchase this one. But it's up to you guys.
So $1,200, it's roughly $12, a little over $1,200 a year?
You technically don't have to have a maintenance agreement. But if something happens to the machine.
Yeah. A little trip out. So versus your $163 plus your, you said $200 just for the lease agreement, so?
Right now, we're paying, I think it was like $360 roughly a month, $365.
So this one's got it down to $109?
And we just? And we still have, I think, in the, in the fund for what we have left for the, as if we had continued to lease it through the, into the fiscal year, it would, I think it was still less than $1,900 to just purchase it. So it's not, it's still within the budget. We're just, instead of leasing it for a month, we're just buying.
Do you feel that is a good, good?
I've never had any problems with it. That's why, it's like, because if you go buy one, another one that's off-lease, even if it was from Canon or somebody else, you don't know the history behind it. Whereas this one, it's, we got it new and wasted $12,000 on it.
You're dropping it down from $360 to $109. That's, that's not bad.
So. Yeah. Exactly.
So it's been $109 a month total for everything?
Well, we have to pay for the machine after the $1,900. But right now, we're paying like $360 something average. And it fluctuates. There's, there's months if you're printing a whole bunch of stuff out, it'll be higher. And there's months that you don't print a bunch, but the average was?
So this is, this is as of now. And so if you did, if you did the $220, whatever it is, that's 20. If you did, finished it out, that's still around $1,200, $1,300 for the six months. Did you say we had six months left?
We have six months left at $200 a month for the, no, our lease is up.
Or our lease is up?
But if we, we can continue just to lease it, which is, they sent me another bill the other day for $203. So we can just buy it for $1,900 or we can continue to lease something, which is dumb. You lease it another, you know, five months, you've already basically bought it.
Yeah, yeah.
You just don't get credit for it.
What's your thoughts?
How old is it right now?
Should be five years old. Because there was a new lease whenever it came in. And there hasn't been any, I mean, you know.
Compared to copiers, if you were to buy another one from somewhere else, the amount of paper and stuff that's gone through, it's gonna?
And you don't weigh more than what we have.
Yeah.
There hasn't been a whole lot of usage on it. I mean, there's basic stuff that gets copied, but it's not like you're running a huge office that that thing's just running 24/7. The only time we ever had a problem with it, I think we shut it off and turned it back on and it was, it'd be good.
All right. Can I get a motion to, to vote on the purchasing of our current copy machine of the 2000 and doing the maintenance agreement for $109?
I'll make a motion. I'm agreeing.
Give me a second. All in favor? Yeah, that's standing. All right. Discuss about hand-up of bills, MAXIS Engineering and Welch Walker Associates.
I just wanted these in here. The MAXIS was their final bill, since you had spoken with him and told him we're gonna do it in county. So he sent in a final bill. We've actually already had a check written that's been signed, I just didn't want it to go out because it's a SLOSS check, without it being very clear that it's a SLOSS check that's going out.
And, and I did speak with Mary and she's more than willing to, to work with the county to give them whatever they needed. So it's been?
Yeah. It wasn't anything ugly. It was just a matter of, we just needed something different for that project. But the total for his work from, I think it was mid-March to beginning of December, was $9,000, $9,015.86. And it was coming out of SLOSS four. And we also, and this is something I don't think we really had to vote on, but just so everybody was aware, we got the invoice from Welch Walker and Associates and just, there's a copy of it in there for $15,550. I was just going to send the check out and wanted everybody to know because it's not a $500 check.
Okay. That's about, that's how much it is every year.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's the same thing, but it's just for clarification purposes, so everybody knows.
Can I get a motion to approve MAXIS Engineering's $15,000, their final bill for $1,000? Did you say $9,000?
It was $9,015.
$9,015.
Yeah, there should be a copy of it.
You can send your itemized bill or anything?
Yeah. It's a, like, if you look underneath it and have the original invoice, that that was all of the charges were underneath it. It's done like on an hourly rate based on, some of it was professional fees and those reimbursables.
I'll make a motion to approve the $9,015. I'll say it.
All in favor? Copy bring just kicked in. All in favor? You announced, thank you. James and Welch Walker and Associates for our audit report this year, $15,550. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve $15,550. I'll say it.
All in favor? You announced. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'm making a motion to adjourn to the second. I'll say it.
All in favor? Can I get a motion?
I'm making a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Say it.
Call in favor? Yeah, that's standing. And I'm sorry to do that, I'm writing down who goes, who does the person's second. So I have to, okay. Help the appearance. Anybody have anything for us tonight?
What don't talk about?
Well, I appreciate everybody being here. We've got refreshments out front. Please, please stay and have, have some discussion. So if you don't stay, take some time with you and help both of my, our council members. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll say it.
Yeah, that's standing.